Janice Gomes.
Here.
Amanda Souza.
Here.
Rosemary Eva.
Here.
Stu Hardy is absent. Susan Gill here. Adam Raposa, absent. Dave Perry, absent. Peter Bramonti, absent. And we also have Mike Marcello, Jennifer Scilliano, and Tara Ferrera is here tonight. So Joe Cardelo and Rick Rogers have been excused from this meeting because we aren't going to be able to do much. So I think everybody got the message, but basically there was some, people had to be quarantined in the building and planning office for COVID. And so Jennifer and Tara weren't able to be in there to get the materials out that had been submitted in time for us to have this meeting. Jennifer just came back yesterday. Tara isn't back yet. So that's why we just had to get everything pushed to another date this month. But we had to hold the meeting because these are public hearings and otherwise these people would have had to re-advertise. Because this was the date certain that we continue to. So that's the reason for this sort of abbreviated meeting tonight. So I'll go ahead and start. The first item is Southern Rhode Island Properties Incorporated. It's a preliminary plan and development plan review, public hearing, proposed self-storage facility, major land development, plat 107, lot 801, East Side Progress Road, South Side Industrial Way, industrial and planned development park zoning districts, discussion and possible vote continued from November 10, 2020. The time clock is 90 days to December 31st, 2020. What we'll do is, this is a, continue the public hearing. And is there anyone present? I don't believe there's anyone present for this item.
No.
No, no, they were excused, right?
Yes.
We let them know, so they were, oh, no.
I said the 15th would probably be doable.
Right. And before we go any further, Rick, I just noticed Rick just logged on. Jennifer, unless you have a reason, Rick, you, we're not reviewing anything tonight. This is all, all these items are going to be continued to the 15th. So if you want to, you can excuse yourself from the meeting.
Okay, thank you, Susan. Jennifer, have a nice meeting.
Thanks, sorry you didn't get notified. Okay. All right, so anyway, so the, the public hearing was continued. We're just waiting for, I guess, or I don't know if you've received the final documents or information that we needed. That will get distributed, Jennifer, I guess.
So, so for advantage storage, I received the final plan. And also, the stormwater operations and maintenance recording agreement, I just got that today. And I'm going to send it to Rick. And I also was able to give a sample of a landscape maintenance plan. So that is in their court. But then Mike will have to review as when I get all those documents. So hopefully, that'll come soon.
Okay. Well, hopefully, we'll have those things in time, get reviewed, and then this item will be continued. So what, what to do is continue, what we're doing is continuing the public hearing to the date certain, which is December 15th, right? Continue to December.
Please, Stu. Time.
Oh, hi, Dave. Just arrived.
Oh, time, 6:30.
Yeah, 6:30, Susan, what about the time as well?
Pardon?
To the date and the time, you're going to continue the meeting to 6:30?
Oh, a time? Oh, okay. Okay, yeah, so we're continuing it to December 15th, the 6:30 PM meeting. Continue to December 15th, 6:30. So is there a motion?
So moved.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Is that Amanda? Okay, any other discussion? Okay, we'll do a roll call vote to continue this item to December 15th. Christine, Christine?
Yes.
Janice?
Yes.
Amanda?
Yes.
Rosemary?
Yes.
Susan, yes. And I don't know, Dave, were you here? Did you want to vote on this?
I heard part of it.
Did you want to vote?
I'll vote, yes.
Okay. 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 All right, very good. We thought this was going to be a ladies' night, Dave.
Oh, I'll get off.
No, 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 that's all. Okay. Let's see, item number two is Tiverton Horizon Development Corporation. Master plan, public informational meeting, Lake Road Acres, six lot, major rural subdivision.
Yes.
What? Plat 609, lot 109, West Side Lake Road, west of Jacklawn Way, R80 and Unquick Pond Watershed Secondary Overlay Districts, discussion and possible vote continued from November 10th, 2020. Time clock 90 days to December 31st, 2020. So I will continue this public informational meeting.
Motion to approve the movement to the 15th of December meeting.
Second. Oh, I think.
Discussion.
Yeah, discussion. And that's to December 15th at 6:30, right? Correct? December 15th at 6:30. Was there any other discussion? Jennifer, did you just, did you want to make any comments on it?
Yes, I wanted to say that I received the plans and we received the open space. It was planned, but we weren't able to distribute it, so that's why we're continuing the meeting. So I, I think court wants to speak, but we did receive everything. It's just that we didn't want to open the town, have you guys come in and get packets in paper when we were quarantined, so.
Court, did you want to?
I was just letting you know I was here. I, I understand what happened. It was, I got notified right away that this was going to happen, so we planned on this, so I thank you for all of that. There's some things in, so we'll see you on the 15th.
Right.
There's actually some, there's some, I'll talk to Mike, but there was a bunch of the legal tricks of how we were going to get the barns and the open space and those things. And there may actually be a proposal we're working on to go even less lots down to a residential compound with five. Because that's the only way we can keep the open space, not public, and fix some of the problems that, that I brought up last time with insurance of riding horses on someone else's land and those things. So I'll address that on the 15th, but for it, and I'll talk to Mike in the meantime, because it's a, it may be a modification that requires a new application, even though it's less than the last application. Some towns say if you're doing less, you're okay, and not more. So it's less lot, it's one less lot. But it also.
From a major to a minor subdivision, so it would be.
Right, so it may just be a new app then, for planning purposes, at least you'll all know what that discussion is. We're still in the, we're still trying to get it drawn so that we know we can do that. But it addresses a, the only difference is you knock a lot off, it allows the open space to be just on Buck's lot. So for insurance purposes and stuff, that helps. It's still, it's just not common open space. It's open space with a, with a conservation easement on the open space portion of his own lot. We're having a lot of trouble with insurance companies saying that people that buy a lot in the neighborhood and have horses on the common space that they own it, don't have insurance liability and those things. So we, we have to lose a lot, but we could also, we can also do under the residential compound, we can do non-paved roads, which will change all our drainage, so.
But Court, the, the density of those lots, the remaining lots would have to be increased.
Well, the rural compound.
You may not fall into rural compound.
Yeah. Court, I don't, Court, I don't, I don't want to get too much into the specifics of what may or may not happen, because this motion is to continue. So I don't want to get, I don't want to get to the merits of any kind of proposal that you may or may not have at this point.
I understand that. Yeah, I really, just for informational purposes, wanted to say for planning, if that's what we come to do, you may, because I know you have a lot on next meeting. And people need, would like to know if we're going to be shorter than we otherwise thought we were going to be.
Yeah, the other thing that I want to, the other thing that I want to warn everybody is that the next meeting is scheduled for December 15th. We're all subject to what the governor decides. We may, we may, you know, we may be in a full lockdown by December 15th. We don't know. We're hearing some rumors that that may be happening based upon the increase of the numbers. So obviously, it would be very difficult. We'd have to have a Zoom meeting anyway. We wouldn't be, it wouldn't be a full public hearing. So just, just be aware of that.
Mike, with that, with that said, do you think the time clock, should it be extended at this point? Because the time clock on this one is 12:31.
Well, I'll be there on 12:15 to extend the clock for you. I think what happened in Portsmouth, so you should know, is when COVID first happened in March, we extended a council meeting. And when they extended the council meeting, they didn't go on like you guys are smart enough to do to continue it. They just merely canceled it. And then later, the things that have now been challenged, because you had to advertise three successive weeks in a newspaper on a zone change, it was a zone change case. But you almost have to get on to continue it, no matter what the governor does. Or you have to start every, there's an argument, you have to start everything over with, with new notifications. So I will be there on the 15th to say that I'll extend the time clock, if that's what we need, if that's what we need to do.
Okay. All right, so we have a first and a second to continue this item, this public hearing to, or public informational meeting to December 15th, 6:30. I assume there's another member of the public. I guess if we're going to do that person. Member of the public. Okay, so I'll do the roll call vote. Christine?
Yes.
Janice?
Yes.
Amanda?
Yes.
Rosemary?
Yes.
Susan, yes, and Dave. Got unmute Dave. You're still muted.
Oh, my God.
There you go.
How's that? Yes.
Formality, but all right, you got it.
Somebody put a hand up over here.
Okay.
Thank you, everyone.
Yeah, thanks, Court. Okay, so item number three is Bill Sales Firewood. It's master plan, public informational meeting, Bill's Wood Sales, major land development, plat 109, lot 701, 702, 703, 704. Tiverton Industrial Park, East of Progress Road, industrial zoning district, action review and possible vote. Time clock of 90 days, January 31st, 2021. Is there anyone from Bill Sales here? Just as a matter of course, no one, okay. No one. Okay, so what we're doing is oh, is this the first one? I thought this was a continuation. We did, didn't we?
This is, this is a continuation. You did, um, the ERS, you did approve that.
Well, yeah, it's all right, it's just the, yeah, the agenda's incorrect, all right. So this is a continuation of the public informational meeting.
Yes.
Yeah. Okay, so do you want to just give any comments you have, Jennifer, on the status of this?
Yes, we do have the updated version of the master plan. But again, that was, we didn't want to distribute it. But hopefully, we will do that distributing on Thursday.
Okay.
Now that I'm back in the office.
Okay. Okay. Anything else? Okay, all right, so it is a motion to continue this item to December 15th at 6:30 PM.
Moved.
Second.
Any other comments or discussion? All right, we'll go do the vote. Christine?
Yes.
Janice?
Yes.
Amanda? Is it Amanda? Oh, we lost Amanda, okay. Where was it? Oh, Rosemary?
Yes.
Susan, yes, and Dave?
Yes.
I don't know if she's gone for good or just stepped off for a minute, okay. All right, so we'll go on to item number four. This is B K D Secana Bay LLC, as far a concept plan. Brookdale Secana Day Memory Care, plant 301, lots 136, 137, 138, and 139. 1215 Main Road, R60 zoning district review and possible vote. I don't know, Jennifer, do you want to make any comments on this?
Yes, um, I, I've received their, their concept plan. What was interesting, we were doing research and back when they originally made this assisted living, it was by right, they didn't need a special use permit. And I don't think it ever went to planning. And also, it's like 50 feet tall. And that, that also was by right at the time. So when they first proposed this concept plan, you know, we were researching to see what they had planned before, and there was, there was nothing. And then I researched the zoning and everything was by right, so they didn't have to get a special use permit or any variances for their building.
It did come to, I'll give you some his, history on that one that I can remember. It did come to planning. I was at the ribbon cutting of the original assisted living. And it was in a residential zone. And I can't remember, but there should be some files there on it.
Nothing is recorded.
We didn't record in those days. So it was in the minutes.
Is it just a building office, or you actually came to the planning department?
There should be some in the planning, and there's probably some in the, in the town council.
What was it originally called, Rosemary? Because it's changed names a few times.
It has. I have to think.
You know, was Brookdale, was, what was it before?
The Bueneado family owned it. And they were the ones that came and made the petition. In fact, we did some site visits to some of their other establishments.
But to hear they went to planning, but, uh, yeah.
Yeah, maybe it's just under a different title that's making it difficult to find, so anyway, okay. So we'll, we'll have that one on the agenda for the 15th. So do we have a motion to continue this item to December 15th meeting at 6:30 PM?
Almost.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion, comments? Okay, the roll call for the vote, Christine?
Yes.
Janice?
Yes.
Amanda?
I'm, are we still talking about the same thing that I was, because my internet.
Oh, no, 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 we're on Secana Bay, man, our concept plan.
Okay.
We're here for all, you listen to all of it, though. It's up to you.
Yeah, that's fine, yes.
Okay. Concept plan to continue. Well, who's next? Rosemary?
Yes.
Susan, yes, Dave?
Yes, I remember it as the coachman.
Don't we all?
Right, okay, so item number five. Tiverton Planning Board Items, Approval of Minutes, November 10, 2020 draft. Those just went out yesterday, so those were meant to just go in your packet for the next meeting. Realized it was short notice, because Jennifer had been, I mean Tara had been out. So I think Tara, Jennifer, you sent them out yesterday, correct? But we aren't going to do those tonight?
No, we're not going to.
Yeah, we'll carry those.
We'll probably get them.
Carry those to the next meeting, okay. Item B is Shorty's recommendation to town council and possible vote, gravel bonds, fund 500. Well, Mike, you're here. I didn't think you were going to do anything. You got anything to report on gravel bonds? No? Nope, okay, no gravel bond, okay. So we're just still waiting for a resolution on that. Oh, but we did do, the Winterberry one did go before the council, was that last Monday? So they did hear, get the information, and Rick Rogers also provided some information. So they have until, they've given us six months to Winterberry Woods to establish a homeowners association. And I think Mike was going to be in charge of, I guess drafting a letter to send out to the residents of the.
At the town administrator, I, yep.
Yeah, so we'll follow up on it in the future, but it has been turned over to the council. So hopefully, we'll make, they'll make some progress on it as far as getting those roads accepted into the town system. Okay. Item C is, oh, that, oh, that's something. So I figured if we do C and D tonight, since we didn't have a gel, just to get these done. The first one is Planning Board Budget 20, it should be 2020. Oh, 2021, 2020 to 21, recommendation to town council and possible vote. So every year in December, we do have a little mini budget. It goes before the budget committee, and it also goes to the town administrator, who then incorporates that to take to the town council, the process. So our budget has been whittled down to two items. I think Jennifer sent that out, is that yesterday? Yesterday. Just a quick review, subdivision regulation amendment. So we still try and maintain a budget for advertising costs. And then the other one is the professional technical services is for to pay steer engineering to attend our meetings. The applicant pays the cost of the reviews and the reports that they do. But in order for them to attend the meeting, they do get paid for that. Excellent, out of, out of our budget. And also, it did incorporate, include, so we figured if we had 12 meetings a year, that would be $6,000. What was also included was funds to allow them to, to participate in zoning board meetings if they were called upon to, to offer testimony for an application. So what we need to do is, I mean, we had $3,000 in our budget this year. And Jennifer, how much did we actually use? I was asking the, the one ads that we ran for the subdivision or the checklist and subdivision regs. I think that's the only advertisement we run this year.
Yeah, we spent $756 for that. But we will have to advertise again for the Cisterns and for the ESA, the environmental study, if we want to include that. So double that.
Right, and if there's, and if there's any additional items, so I don't know if we want to stick with the 3,000, or we want to pare it back a little bit. Because I know what they've done in the past is they look at past years, what the history is, at what you've shown that you've expended. And this year, we've only gone through $756, so they may not, we're very likely they get trimmed back. I mean, I don't know if you want to propose like either 2,000 or 2,500. You know, you really can anticipate it gets cut a little bit. But I don't know if anybody has any strong feelings about how much you think we should ask for.
Well, looking forward to my new position, I would say cut it by 20%.
Yeah, I mean, I, I would, I would, I would suggest maybe proposing 2,500, reduce it.
Well, I, I would leave it at the 3,000.
Yeah, because I think it's going to get, I know it's probably going to get reduced. So it's a matter of, of how far you want to reduce it.
I'll be, I'll be an advocate for it.
I think what you need to do is make sure you project what you expect to spend.
Right, right. So I don't know how much you can, we can anticipate spending for subdivision regs. I mean, if we keep working on them, there may be some additional advertising that has to be done. I know this, they always have to be advertised three times, so depending on the size of the ad, it can get costly. Well, we can leave it at the 3,000 and propose that.
Is the money in there for the videoing also?
Videos for, through COVID money.
Yeah, right. That's a lot of a COVID fund that's not coming out of our pocket.
Okay.
So, and then the other one, the professional technical services. I mean, the first year it was at 12,000, figuring, I guess, you know, both zoning and planning would have one meeting a month. This last year, it was reduced to 10,000. We can have 9,000 or 10,000.
If you did have two meetings a month, then it would end up being.
Right.
Thousand.
Well, historically, what we've done to be, to, to try and be fair to the town is, I mean, typically, we haven't had a lot of two meetings a month. It's just when things have gotten really backed up recently. But the, the way we had, had stipulated before was that steer would be paid for the regular meeting. If we had a special meeting specifically for applicants, you know, special meeting for specific items, that, that would be their responsibility to pay the tab for steer rather than it being on the town, if it was a special meeting. So to say like, if, if we had a special meeting for, you know, bill sales and, and advantage storage, you know, they would split the tab for whatever the costs were, to be fair, rather than putting it on the town. I don't know if this month, since Joe, we didn't need him tonight. I mean, I think on the 15th, that will be, that will be his one time to bill for the month. But yeah, I don't, I don't, kind of how, how the administrator or whoever feels about it, you know, we had two meetings a month. If the town was willing to budget for two meetings a month, potentially two meetings a month. But I also don't want to absorb, even though it's in our line item, it is supposed to be for the zoning board also. They're supposed to have access to these funds if they use steer engineering, so. I would suggest probably just leaving it at the 10,000 for now. That is hard to know what's going to happen the rest in, in '21. Hopefully, we'll have face-to-face meetings at some point, but it's going to be a while. So I don't know, if that's what you want to do, is to submit the same budget we had last year, the 3,000 and 10,000.
I think we're safe to do that, because it's very difficult to project on this year's, because we haven't had it, but the COVID.
Right.
So I think status quo would be the, my suggestion.
Well, and actually, this budget doesn't start till July 1st. So yeah, by July 1st, who knows, you know, the latter half of the year might, might let up. And I know we've got a lot of things on our agenda that big things coming in, we may have to have a number of months, two meetings, to get through this stuff without having these meetings go on forever. So, no, I think, David, that I would suggest, well, you can do it either way. Because you're going to be going to the budget committee. I figured you should either probably recuse or abstain from voting on our budget, or when you get to the budget committee, you shouldn't vote on it. All right. You know, I think you should be voted, my feeling is probably, it probably doesn't, I don't know, that's a, well, you're not getting any money.
I know.
Mike, Mike has any comment to, to just, you know, if you're voting on the budget here, and then you're voting on the budget for the budget committee? If there's any look of impropriety, if you vote on it twice.
Doesn't matter.
Okay, all right. So if, yeah, there's no objections, we'll leave the two budget items as what they've been this past year, so 3,000 for advertising and 10,000 for professional technical services. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Okay, and a second?
Second.
We have a first and a second to approve this budget, and then it'll be forwarded on to approve the town administrator. I'm sure if it goes to town administrator and the budget committee, or just the town administrator, but anyway. Jennifer, I guess you can figure out where it needs to go.
Yeah, I'll, I'll ask Chris.
Yeah. I know, I think he incorporates it into his budget.
I believe so.
It goes to Chris first.
Yeah, but we also do present it, we have the past, we have presented it to both the budget committee and the council when it comes up. Yeah, but we also do present it, we have the past, we have presented it to both the Budget Committee and the Council when it comes up. Um, okay, so the vote is Christine?
Yes.
Janice?
Yes.
Amanda?
Yes.
Rosemary?
Yes.
Susan? Yes, and Dave?
Yes.
Alright. Okay. And then the other item is for. Annual Planning Board Calendar and Special Meeting Calendar Discussion Impossible Vote. This is what we, we need to do is every year post our annual calendars. So I did wanna go through, so first the regular meeting schedule, which we typically have our meetings on the. First Tuesday of the month.
Adam Chair, are you looking at some document that you received?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, Jennifer sent it out.
No, I, I didn't.
We didn't get it.
No.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought everybody received this.
I, I searched all through my backup today and I could not find anything even electronically.
No, no, it was, it was in my home computer, and, uh, I thought we could just go through the dates.
Oh, alright, if you wanna do that, sorry.
I would prefer to, to, uh, have a hard copy and, and see if there's any conflicts with my schedule.
Okay.
Rosemary?
Alright, alright, yeah, we'll, we'll postpone it then. I'm sorry, I thought, I thought everybody had received a copy of it. Okay, um, so we'll continue that item to, uh, the fifteenth, I'm just trying to get it out of the way. Um, December fifteen, alright, and then the last thing was just, Jennifer, um. I was just wondering, because I don't think we ever received the October A O report and then the November A O report, if we can get those both.
Yes, I will be getting those to you.
October and November, okay. Okay. So I think, I think that's all we have, I'll just, we only got one item done, okay, alright, um. I think that's everything, um, it's gonna be busy the next couple of months. I know Jennifer's trying to catch up. After being away for a couple of weeks and, yeah, Tara will be busy, but we'll get all the, the, they'll get the items out to you before the end of this week. So you have two weekends. Um, plus to work on them, and I'm trying to move these things along, so Anna Dave, thanks again for your. Three plus years of service and.
Thank you.
You have some luck with your budget, baby.
Before.
No, I know, so it's a whole brave new world. Okay, so do we have a motion to adjourn?
Almost.
Uh, seven oh four.